That's just fun.
And I don't have any fun way to present it. I'm sorry.
Oh, no.
Time, next time, next year.
So, hey, there we are. Hey, Mayor.
Good evening, everyone.
Hello.
Hello, Mayor.
Well, I'm going to go ahead. I'll wait a moment.
Are we all ready for snow?
Yep. Can't wait.
No.
There's a rule against the Finance Chair being excited about big snowstorms.
Guys, this has cost money, Amanda. I'm sorry, Counselor Baker.
We didn't have any last year, so I feel like...
Just gonna send out my best wishes to Amber for holding it down. Really appreciate you, Amber.
No worries. We were exceptionally prepared for communications this year because I was like so ready to go for the last two years.
Well, I've been waiting up to this.
Yeah. I said earlier, I accidentally removed Counselor Diaz instead of promoting her, and now she's having some trouble getting back in, so... Not sure status of her right now.
Counselors, you should all have received an email from me a little bit ago with the overview presentation and also the department presentations all put into one document, which, one document, it's almost as long as the actual budget itself, so it's not quite a summary if it's 100 and whatever pages, but...
Thank you, Patrick.
Yep.
I don't know what the threshold officially is for something to be considered a summary, but that might...
I think it's less than 100 pages.
Maybe we could turn it into a musical next year, like a three-minute musical summary? No? Tough crowd today.
Those corny jokes only work for Izzy, actually.
Only because that's part of my brand. That's the whole... You gotta keep doing it until people laugh out of pity or spite, Jamie. That's the trick.
Yeah, I'm working on my dad jokes. I thought I was gonna get some of those in there, but I guess not yet.
Are we having any luck re-adding Counselor Diaz to the meeting?
Um, no, I'm not sure. I emailed her again to find out if she's getting any sort of errors and told her to try with a different email, but I'm not sure.
Okay, does that a phone call come in?
Yeah, um, if the phone call that just joined is Janet, please press star nine so I know to add you. Okay. All right, looks like she is in.
Okay, I'm here.
All right, everyone. Good evening. I hereby call this December 15th Meeting of the Council of the City of Lancaster to order. We'll begin with the roll call of members. Mr. Harris.
Yes, Mr. President. Mr. Royo.
Here.
Ms. Bakke.
Here.
Ms. Craig.
Here.
Ms. Diaz.
Here.
Mr. Garcia Molina.
Here.
Mr. Soto.
Here.
And President, President Smith-Wadeell.
Here. Let's move to the approval of the minutes for the December 8th meeting.
Motion to approve?
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Council comments. Okay, hearing none. Mr. Harris.
Mr. Royo.
Aye.
Ms. Bakke.
Aye.
Ms. Craig.
Aye.
Ms. Diaz.
Aye.
Mr. Garcia Molina.
Aye.
Mr. Soto.
Aye.
And President Smith-Wadeell.
Aye. Thank you, Mr. Harris. Proclamations, honors, awards, and resolutions of recognition. Mr. Harris.
We have none tonight, Mr. President.
Okay, that moves us to our first public comment period reserved for those persons who have contacted the city clerk prior to the meeting. Do we have any, Mr. Harris?
We do not, Mr. President.
Okay, that moves us to reports requested by council. Do we have any, Mr. Harris?
We do not, Mr. President.
Okay, that moves us to interim reports of committees of council. I believe we have one.
That's correct, Mr. President. I have a report. Okay, so I'm gonna venture to actually make this a summary and not a summary like the one that Mr. Hopkins sent us earlier this evening. On December 5th, the Finance Committee held budget hearings where each department leader gave an overview of the 2020 activities and their plans for 2021 within the proposed budget. This evening, I will attempt to summarize that meeting, but I will in no way do justice to the long list of accomplishments, creativity, and efficiencies presented at this meeting. Please, if you are not able to attend virtually that day, members of the public, review that video of this meeting on the city's YouTube channel. It represents the hard work and dedication of our city employees and their commitment to being good stewards of your tax dollars. A summary of the departments are as follows. The Community Planning and Economic Development Department cited the work in 2020 of individual departments, including the Bureau of Planning, which completed 35 land development reviews and got 161 new residential units approved. The Bureau of Building, Planning, and Administration, which began a planned relocation to the first floor of City Hall to improve customer service. The Bureau of Public Art, which pivoted and completed a public service mural project with local artists in response to the pandemic. And the Bureau of Property Maintenance and Housing Inspections, where employees were redeployed as contact tracers while they were unable to complete their inspections early in the pandemic. Bureau goals for 2021 include the full implementation of a lead safety team, maximizing the amount of critical repairs for eligible homeowners, and the expansion of the home loan program. Restarting systematic property inspections, continuing the city's COVID-19 response under an expanded and restructured Bureau of Health, continuing major land development projects that encompass $100 million of upcoming investment, and 700 to 800 residential units in the pipeline. Beginning the comprehensive plan process with a 20-year vision for city development, hiring a PACE manager for public art, and leading community engagement for Yule Plaza and Artful Intersection programs. Loop will be moved under the Department of Neighborhood Engagement for 2021. The Public Works Department is made up of about 200 employees. Across its divisions, it's responsible for maintaining 110 miles of city streets, over 150 miles of sewer mains, 3,000 stormwater inlets, and producing 20 million gallons of water per day, among many, many other duties we often take for granted. The department goals in 2021 include the implementation of the recently adopted Vision Zero Plan, training and cross-training of staff so that the city can self-perform more work, ultimately lowering our costs and allowing us to control, have more control over quality of work. Capital planning for infrastructure replacement to stay ahead of future PUC rate cases, and increasing recycling so that the solid waste bureau is a profit center for the city. The Bureau of Police provided a snapshot of 2020, which included responding to approximately 45,000 calls for service as of the date of that meeting, running with the staff of between 134 and 142 sworn officers, a partnership with the Community and Police Working Group and community leaders, which helped maintain peace and served as liaisons between police and demonstrators during protests. 199 individuals referred to our dedicated department social worker and the completion of more than 500 hours of training for officers. In 2021, the department, under the new interim chief, John Bay, will maintain staffing levels through a series of upcoming retirements, leaving the department with 12 less officers than budgeted positions. Will focus on succession planning, complete the hiring process for a second social worker, implement a community outreach group where officers utilize overtime shifts to engage the community on foot or bike rather than in regular car patrols, update the police website and centralize informational platforms, and expand diversity recruitment efforts. Highlights in 2020 from the mayor's office include the equity commitments made following protests in the spring, COVID-related outreach and communications, bringing legal review in-house for the city, and continuing to expand data-led governance. In 2021, Mayor Sarachi says those initiatives will continue, along with a focus on improved customer service across all departments, including the coordination of the Neighborhood Engagement Department and Loop, and the establishment of the 3-1-1 information system. Processes related to diversity, equity, and inclusion are planned across all city departments. The Department of Neighborhood Engagement touted the resident engagement process as built in 2020. Thirty-four Love Your Block projects were completed in 2020. Those included a neighborhood mural on Locust Street, a coloring book of images of Lancaster residents, a portography project, and a refugee youth journalism project. The Neighborhood Leaders Academy, JP, continued to meet virtually through the pandemic. The department also coordinated the Community Police Working Group and received $140,000 in grants for their work in 2020. In 2021, the biggest change will bring Loop into the department. This move aligns the strategic goals of building strong neighborhoods and sound government, improving the capacity of both departments, providing cost savings, and strengthening the connections between our neighborhoods and our downtown. The Fire Bureau responded to over 3,400 emergency calls in 2020. That number was a decrease from 2019 due to COVID-19-related restrictions. Firefighters logged over 9,900 training hours. Lancaster is the largest third-class city in Pennsylvania in which all firefighters have achieved a recognized credential or certification. In 2021, the department expects to see the West King Street Station completed in June and work to begin on East King Street. Increases in the budget are mostly attributed to apparatus replacement, which will improve the serviceability of the department. Six firefighters will retire in 2021. Recruitment and testing for hiring, which is scheduled in January of 2022, will happen the coming year. The Administrative Services Department showed us that Lancaster's pension plans are 83% funded, or about 30 million less than liabilities, which is higher than many third-class cities in Pennsylvania. In 2020, COVID-19 impacted revenues across the board, but the full impact may not be seen until 2021. In 2020, the department completed Strategic Management Planning Program, PFM, negotiated contracts with the police and fire departments as well as furlough and redeployment agreements with ASME to save approximately half a million dollars while maintaining employee benefits and seniory. The Accounting Department brought on a new Deputy Director of Finance and was extremely successful, and that is putting it lightly in grant development. The city also launched the PennBid system and quickly implemented remote working ability for city staff during COVID shutdowns. The HR department was reorganized into a more efficient business partner model, and they engaged McLean Company to work with all departments to develop a citywide diversity, equity, and inclusion program and culture. The goals for the department in 2021 include deficit reduction, maintain a fee, manage a fee study, refinancing of the 2011 and general obligation bonds, more grant development, implementing city billing, excuse me, monthly billing for utility customers, and electronic billing and payments, expansion of data governance and analysis across departments, upgrades in IT infrastructure, and implementing a citywide orientation and training curriculum, particularly for new supervisors. For each of these lists of accomplishments and goals I have just given, I could have easily included a dozen more for each department. That's not just because the meeting was six hours long. Truly, while proposed increases for each department are more modest this year owing to the financial crunch of COVID-19 and our city's structural deficit, the work that our city's employees do is anything but modest. Mr. President, that concludes my report.
I remain impressed by your ability to synthesize large amounts of information in ways that are accessible to the general public, Counselor Bakke, and thank you for your thoroughness in reporting. Are there any council comments on the interim committee report? Typically, I wouldn't ask, but if there are none, we can move right along to our legislative agenda. So we begin with ordinances for final passage. Administration Bill Number 182020. Mr. Harris.
Yes, Mr. President. An ordinance of the City Council of the City of Lancaster, amending Chapter 67 of the Code of the City of Lancaster Police Bureau, Article 1, General Provisions, Section 6710, Probation, Subpart B, New Hires to the Police Bureau, to require that all new hires within the Bureau of Police be made subject to a probationary period of two years, providing for the repeal of inconsistent ordinances, providing for the severability of the ordinance, and providing that the ordinance shall take effect in accordance with the laws of the Commonwealth of Pennsylvania. The title, Mr. President.
Thank you, Mr. Harris. I'll hear a motion.
Motion to approve.
We have a motion and a second. Counselor Garcia Molina.
Thank you, Mr. President. This one is pretty straightforward, so this ordinance change really is a one-word change that extends the probationary period of police officers from one year to two years. It really is intended so that administrators get a chance to better know new officers before committing to employment on a permanent basis. I think this is really influential kind of in the limitations that we currently have with kind of employment due to the police union, but another piece of information related to that that I think is important to note is that this change has been discussed with representatives of the Police Officers Union, and they didn't have any objections. It much sums it up. If Patrick has anything else to add, that would be it, Mr. President.
Okay, great. Council comments. From the public. Hearing none. Mr. Harris.
Mr. Royo.
Aye.
Ms. Bakke.
Aye.
Ms. Craig.
Aye.
Ms. Diaz.
Aye.
Mr. Garcia Molina.
Aye.
Mr. Soto.
Aye.
And President Smith-Wadeell.
Aye. All right, that brings us to resolutions, beginning with Administration Resolution Number 632020. Mr. Harris.
A resolution of the Council of the City of Lancaster, amending the schedule of fees and charges for solid waste and recycling services provided by the city's contractor to owners of residential properties and owners of opt-in properties to become effective January 1st, 2021.
Motion to approve?
Record.
We have a motion and a second. Ms. Strazo, would you add Director Campbell to the meeting? Counselor Bakke, I believe this is your item.
It is. I'm sure that Mr. Campbell will want to expand on this, but the shortest possible explanation is that this increase to the solid waste and recycling fees are $32 per year for each customer, and it's directly result, a direct result of the contract that was negotiated in October, an increased cost to us for recycling as well. Mr. Campbell?
This is primarily Patrick's to offer, but the one clarification that I'd like to add is that the other contract was ending in September, so this was a competitively bid contract which addressed certain aspects of the delivery of those services. This was the best, the best qualified and the best price to be able to perform the services that we requested.
And just a clarifying question or something additional to consider, that particular contract also has some incentives for the hauler, for their performance, is that correct? That we didn't have before?
That is correct. We, there were some, some areas that we wanted to make sure were improved upon, and we included an incentive clause that accelerates their ability to attend to problem situations, missing, missing bins, replacement of bins, et cetera, in a very, very timely manner, and it also included a a piece of scope related to the improvement of the quality of the services so that if there are complaints from, from the citizenry, those get addressed within a certain amount of time guaranteed, and if they do not get addressed in that way, they do not get that incentive.
Great, thank you.
Mr. Hopkins, do you have more that you feel you need to add? You're muted.
Now, 10 months later, still getting used to this. So, in terms of the cost itself and the increase, the vast majority of the increase, as I presented at December, the December 1st meeting, is related to the hauler fee itself, so that would be the part related to the contract that Mr. Campbell talked about. That fee went from $99.54 under the prior contract to $123.48 under the new contract. The other increases that we're seeing that are, relate to this fee increase are an increase in the recycling processing fee that is going from $60 a ton in 2020 to $65 a ton in 2021, and then the other is a $1 per ton increase in the tipping fee that's charged at the Solid Waste Management Authority transfer station. So those are the three combined cost drivers and that result in the need for the fee increase itself.
Thank you. Council comments. From the public. I'm not looking at the attendee list, but there are two, and I assume they are Chris and DJ. Great. Great. Hearing none. Mr. Harris.
Mr. Royo.
Aye.
Ms. Bakke.
Aye.
Ms. Craig.
Aye.
Ms. Diaz.
Aye.
Mr. Garcia Molina.
He's frozen.
Come back. Mr. Soto.
Aye.
President Smith-Wadeell. President Smith-Wadeell.
I believe he's frozen as well.
Now they're both frozen. There's a rolling internet outage or something going on, okay? It's gonna get to, gonna get to me in a minute, probably.
Problem is that you can't pick what your face is gonna look like when you freeze either. That's real downside.
Okay.
I had to, I had to move. Mr. Harris, where were we?
I just called your name in the, the vote roll.
Great, aye.
And, I'm sorry, Mr. Garcia Molina.
Aye. Thank you.
Excellent.
So Resolution 63 is approved.
Forgive me, I'm moving to somewhere in my location with better internet connection. Great, so that brings us to Administration Resolution Number 642020. Mr. Harris.
Yes, Mr. President. Resolution of the City Council of the City of Lancaster, Lancaster County, Pennsylvania, establishing one, the base rate for the stormwater management fee under and pursuant to the city's stormwater management fee ordinance.
Motion to approve?
Record.
All right, we have a motion and a second. Council comments. Or no? Go ahead.
That's quite all right. So this proposed increase of the stormwater management fee is $3 per 1,000 square feet of impervious surface, and most of the folks within the city are in, Patrick, you're gonna have to, is it tier one or tier two?
Tier, tier two, tier two and tier three.
Tier two and tier three are the lower twos, meaning most people have less impervious surface, so they'll be impacted less by this increase in fees. If there's anything you'd like to expand upon, Patrick?
Yeah, so for the, the property owners in those two tiers, which are close to 80% of all of the property owners in the city, and the vast majority of residential properties are in those two tiers, the, the rate increase itself would result in, and this is on an annual basis, an increase to their fee of either $1.50 or $4.50. So it's a very minimal increase, but you know, as the, the structure of the fee is set up so that the property owners with the largest amount of impervious area on their property, which most likely are parking lots and things like that, which is what produces most of the stormwater flow into the combined sewer system, those are the higher-paying property owners, and so the overall, the total revenue increase that will help to fund additional green infrastructure projects and maintain the, the fund itself is about $270,000.
Thank you.
Are there other council comments? Any comments from the public? Hearing none. Mr. Harris.
Mr. Royo.
Aye.
Ms. Bakke.
Aye.
Ms. Craig.
Aye.
Ms. Diaz.
Aye.
Mr. Garcia Molina.
Aye.
Mr. Soto.
Aye.
And President Smith-Wadeell.
Aye. All right, I believe that concludes our legislative agenda and brings us to the second public comment period. Open for items not on the agenda as listed tonight, and of course, as always, we ask people to be respectful, keep their comments to three minutes, and begin with their, sorry, and begin by letting us know their address and the street they live on. If you're joining the call, you're gonna go ahead and hit the little hand up button at the bottom of your screen if you'd like to participate. Hearing none. I believe that brings us to the report of the mayor. Mayor Sarachi.
Good evening, everyone. As 2020 comes to a close, it's bidding that we, that there'll be a major snowstorm tomorrow. After all, we have only had two 12-plus inch snowstorms before Christmas in 95 years, so 2020 is the year. I wanted to just recognize that this is the first time around for our Director of Public Works, Steve Campbell, and Corey Simo, who took over for, for Donna Jessup, our snow queen, as she retired earlier this year. I have full confidence in their abilities to manage, and wanted to let you know that tomorrow Steve and Donna will be releasing a frequently asked questions about snow emergencies so that we can continue to blow off the dust from our collective awareness about what you should do in a snow emergency, where to park, and all of that. So just a quick, a few things for you, counselors. We have... We have 10 trucks, drivers, plows, and salts all ready to go. They'll be working eight routes continuously as part of their snow fighting. We are expecting heavily accumulations and for it to come down relatively quick, and we're gonna be on this line between ice and sleet. You can check our social media, and we'd appreciate it if you could help us push all of this information out to your neighbors. And please, 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 our goal is to make sure that no one is towed in the City of Lancaster, which every year when we have our first snowstorm of significance, and now it's been a long time, it has actually been since March 2018, I remember, because it was the first day of spring and my first year in office that we have had a snow emergency. And so it's been a long time, so as much as you can, to please remind our neighbors to please move their cars, and there is free parking downtown that went into effect tonight at 5 o'clock. We're giving folks almost 24 hours' advance notice to just get a plan together and to move their cars. Obviously, the free parking is available until the snow emergency lifts, and we'll make that determination sometime tomorrow. But we have Prince Street, Water Street, East King, Duke, North Queen, Penn Square Garage, which is not an LPA garage, Queen Street Garage, and the Red Rose Transit Authority and Steinman Park garages. Those last two again are also not LPA garages. So just pull a ticket when you go in, and we'll be calculating, you know, making sure that if you leave, by the time you conclude, we're good to go. So I want to just give a big shout out to DPW, Steve, you and your team, police, fire, and our communications team, with Amber most especially managing a lot of the online questions about trash, where to park, et cetera, et cetera, for their preparedness. Our team started preparing on Sunday, and we're ready to go. And speaking of teamwork, I'd also like to acknowledge the work of our Criminal Investigation Division for their work on a horrific investigation into child sexual assault, incest, and child pornography. This investigation began with a tip which led to a search warrant and ultimately an arrest. There are crimes that linger in the hearts and minds of our detectives and police officers, and this will likely be one. Because of their investigation, a child is safe, and I'm grateful for their teamwork and their diligence in seeing that case all the way through. And that concludes my report tonight. Mr. President?
Thank you so much, Mayor Surachi, for that informative report, and thank you to everybody who lives on a snow emergency route, who will be taking their car to a garage downtown. And honestly, if you can get free parking out of the Lancaster Parking Authority, you should take any excuse you can get. So I, other than, again, the kind of really terrible jokes I'm trying to train Jamie to use, I don't have a report. Do other counselors have comments?
If I could add just one more thing, President, while, while Steve is here, is just to say that we did need to close our recycling center for a few more days until next week, so it's been closed this entire week, and we are continuing to manage absences as relates to COVID, and he, Steve in particular, has been fielding the lion's share of calls and helping his team remain safe and on the job. So just want to also share that appreciation because it has been, was a lot of work this past weekend for Mr. Campbell.
Well, thank you for that, Mayor, and thank you, Director Campbell, as always. Okay, counselors, barring any other comments that you might have, I will hear a motion to adjourn.
Motion to adjourn?
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
We are adjourned. Have a good evening, everyone. Before you go, do not forget, we have a December 29th meeting where we will vote on the 2021 budget for the City of Lancaster, so we hope to see you there. Have a good night.
Thank you.
Good night, everyone.
Good night.
Good night.